Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Township Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, February 1st, to order, would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Here.
Mr. Meyerly?
Meyerly, here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Present.
Mr. Bentley, here. Dan Spatafora?
Has an accused absence.
Okay. One absence.
Okay, one absent, and we have a quorum. Mr. Meyerly?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you should remove Mr. Spatafora from any roll call votes tonight.
Okay.
I'd support that motion if that's a motion.
Mr. Meyerly made the motion. Mr. Tuckfield seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of previous minute, of previous meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Then do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to approve the board minutes.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Smith. Seconded by?
It's part?
Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda. Any discussions? additions, deletions?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda by Mr. Tuckfield.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Bentley. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, new business. Under 6A, extension of time on preliminary plan. Cortona Park Site Condominiums, permanent parcel 0805100021, located on the south side of 26 Mile Road, east of Romeo Plank, Section 5, Salvatore de Mercurio, petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. As you mentioned, this is located south of 26 and east of Romeo Plank. It is next to via Palmetto subdivision. This is a site plan that this planning commission approved in February of last year. They are nearing that deadline of expiration, and they are seeking to extend that. Their request for this is pointing to the fact that the county and state level approvals are taking longer than expected. No zoning issues are foreseen as a result of extending this, and we would have no concerns with extending it at this time.
Okay. Planning Commissioners, any discussion?
How, Mr. Box, how far along are they?
I don't know the answer to that, but I know they, they have been seeking all the permits they need, like I said, with the state and county government, as well as working with engineering internally, so.
Okay, so they're doing everything, it's the state that's holding them up, not us?
Correct.
Good, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion?
No, no, no.
That the extension of time be granted?
No, I don't think we, I don't, do we have to go to the public? For an extension?
Okay.
No, I didn't think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry?
I was right.
So sorry.
Continue.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
Will I get to say it again?
Yes, you do. Thank you.
If there are no other comments, I'd like to make a motion that the extension of time be granted for the Cortona Park Site Condominium, permanent parcel 0805100-021, located on south side of 26 Mile Road, east of Romeo Plank Road, Section 5, Salvatore de Mercurio, petitioner.
Okay, and I'll second that.
I'll support that. I just have a question, how long do we give them the extension for?
One year.
You have to put?
One year.
One year, okay. And that should probably be included, extension of one year.
Okay, all right, we'll add that to the motion.
February 1st, 2023.
Wow. Motion by Mr. Bentley, seconded by Mr. Meyerly. Would you please call the roll?
I will. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Meyerly?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley? Yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora? Is not here.
Absent.
And that's it?
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the list is site plan. Allied Photochemical, permanent parcel 0818400025, located on the north, located north of 23 Mile Road, a half a mile west of Romeo Plank, Section 18, Francis Boji Petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. This is located in an M1 light industrial zoned property. There is a building that exists there now, as you see on the screen behind you. They have kind of a T turnaround in the back. That was something that was required when they built originally for a fire turnaround for emergency purposes. They are seeking to expand for more warehouse purposes. They're not adding any jobs, but they are adding a significant amount of square footage. Because of that, they did actually go to the zoning board of appeals because they, they now don't have enough parking. They did add some parking. We worked with them a lot to get this site plan in align with our ordinances. They squeezed some parking in on the south side. Fire did require them to have the, the drive aisle wrap all the way around the building due to its size. So again, they, they tried their best to accommodate fire, as well as our ordinances to get parking. They did get a variance for that. One thing we did want to note is, is that the man doors on the east side of the building, as you see up there, they're, they note in, and I guess I can use my cursor, they note that they're removing the two man doors that exist, and that's because of this new drive aisle. There's not enough room. Typically, if there's a man door that would open into a drive aisle, we would require bollards. There's not room to put bollards and then still consider it a drive aisle. So they have to remove those. They do note that they're removing them, but on the elevation itself, they still show the man doors. So we do want to confirm that they, they are aware that those have to be removed. I'm pretty sure they are aware, but we did want to note that. Beyond that, all of their other items have been addressed at this time.
Okay. And all departments are good?
Correct.
Okay. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I could, Josh, did you say they're not having, they're not hiring more people and they do not have enough parking spaces?
So they have parking right now, and, and Mr. Tuckfield may remember, during the ZBA meeting, they did get a variance to not have the amount of parking that we would typically require. I did go out on site and I presented a picture. They, they have excess parking based on the number of employees they have right now. They have more than they need. They, by adding this space, though, our, our parking requirement is based on size of the facility.
Okay.
So it's going to require even more, despite the fact that they're not adding employees. So they did add more parking, even though it sounds as if they actually don't need any of that. They, they put a, you know, a good effort into meeting the ordinance the best they could, but they are still short, I believe it's seven spaces, and that's what the variance was granted for.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And Mr. Box, handicap is still within our ordinances?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just to Mr. Box, the, the question on them man doors, are they getting replaced at all?
Yes, they're moving them to other locations.
They're just moving them passed down.
They can't be on the east side of the building because of the drive aisle.
Okay, so we're still going to have the man doors? All right.
Just in other locations, yep.
Got it.
Okay, Mr. Bentley, so your hand?
Yes, a couple of things, and one has been touched on, the man doors. The, I'm not sure where they would put the man doors and still have, meet the exit requirements depending on the fire protection provided and, and any firewalls that might be in the building, but that was a concern. I know that's, that would be an issue for life, life safety and probably will be verified during the engineering review and building department review.
Correct.
But that was a noted concern. The other, it didn't seem that there was any protection for the existing transformer on the, would be the north end of that new drive on the east side of the building. I know it turns away from that, but that, that seems like a very precarious position, especially if a fire truck goes through there or snowplow, so that might be something that they can address. More of regarding the lighting, although one of the notes had indicated it didn't appear that the lighting was an issue, there appears to be on both sides of the new addition, lighting levels that, that wouldn't be at zero at the property line, so those would have to be looked at on both the east and the west side. And I'm sure that can be worked out during the further design development. One question I had for the, is the petitioner here? I have some questions regarding, do they need to come up here?
Yeah, you can sit at the table.
Come on up, I messed up. Yep, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Jim Trugan. I am with Triumph Engineering, 10775 South Saginaw in Grand Lake.
My name is Frank Boji, with Allied Photochemical.
Okay, okay. So in, in the plan, you know, and that's all we have, is, is a plan that we're looking at, have some elevations and such. I look at the, the existing solvent room is being expanded. It would appear, at least from my experience, that, that could be a dyked area or a depressed slab. Is, is it either one of those that existing?
So yeah, the one we have existing is at the same level, but it's all dyked around.
It's all dyked in case there's spills or what have you.
Right. So we do the expanded area the same way.
So the other one will be dyked as well. I see that there's some sort of overhead door within it through the existing exterior wall, and that would probably be ramped then. Is that correct for forklift or what?
We have a, in the current area, there's also an overhead door where we have a removable dike that can go in while, you remove it while you're driving forklifts through, and then we put it in when it's not in use.
I see, okay. And then the only other, or the couple of other questions, and the solvents that are used, are those hazardous solvents?
They're flammable.
Yeah.
We do, I can give a list. I don't have it with me, but it's all.
I suspect that will be reviewed in the further detailed review by the engineering, as well as the, the building department. But I would, I would caution that some of those chemicals, especially flammables, will have limits for control area, and this would have to be, if your current facility meets it, this new facility might have to be separated by rated walls. And I only say that because you've eliminated egress doors, and you've exposed, you know, you're only 20 feet or so away from the property line, flammable materials, and I don't know whether they're combustible or not, but that might be an issue with that exterior wall, especially when you've got a fire truck going right there adjacent. I'm not sure if all of that's been checked out, but if that needs to be explosion resistant or fireproofed. If nobody knows what's going in there, you could get by without it, but I'm just saying, looking at the life safety concerns, I would keep that in mind and, and at least address that as you go forward, because that might require something different on the outside to have your, your drive right there. And I see that the roof is going up quite, quite a bit higher, so I imagine you're, that's because of storage?
Yeah, yeah, so we could put taller pallet racking in.
Okay, and, and then in this solvent room, half of that is being, is higher as well. Are there high racks in there?
So the, right now, we have 10-foot racking in there, so we do three levels of pallets, and the plan is to just do the same thing in the expanded.
Okay, so no higher than what's existing?
Not in the, not in the.
Not in the solvent room. And does your existing solvent room have ventilation or vents?
Yes.
Out the roof or out the side?
So there's, I think there's both. So there's a, there's an exhaust system for the paint that we make that gets exhausted out, I think the side, and then regular fumes for the room. There's a, there's a vent that goes all day that draws air off the ground level and exhausts it out, out of the roof.
Okay. Okay, 'cause that, that may be a concern as well for the fire department. Other than that, those items and the relocation of those, where, where exactly, because the new plan doesn't show where these new doors are going to be replaced?
Sure. The doors will be.
It just, it still shows the, the current doors?
We do have one door on the southwest corner for the new building.
Yes.
And we can look into putting more doors on there also.
Yeah, and then I guess not on the, on the east side.
No, just not the east.
But there would be space on the south side. I, I'm just looking at, you know, exit distance, so.
No, we will do an egress, we will do an egress plan, make sure that we have the correct distances.
All right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I apologize for not calling you up at the proper time. Did you have anything you'd like to share as far as just answering questions?
I think we're good right now, unless you have any questions for us.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Oliver, I have.
Is there going to be a second dock wall? Or just you're moving your truck well?
There is a second one.
You're gonna, you're additionally putting one in?
Correct.
Are, are them going to be sunk in or are they going to be flush with the ground? Because I see two doors, your loading doors.
Says depressed. So the existing one is sunk in, and then the new one will be sunk in also.
It'll match that?
Yes.
Do you rail around that?
Yeah.
Safety rail?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Just a continuation on that, and I apologize. It does show that there's a dock door at the end of that, an interior dock door, so that means that this is going to be walled off as well, separated?
Yes.
So there won't be a rail, it'll be a wall?
It'll be, what will that be from the inside of the building?
Yeah.
Either a wall or, will it be a wall? Or, I think it will be a wall.
Yep, you will have a wall there. Yep, there should be a wall there.
Yeah, that'll be a wall then.
Be a wall there? And then what happens to that island that's straight out from that, that existing curb and island that separates the drive from the first parking space? Will that be reduced? Because I, I don't know that you'd be able to get it in there with.
The truck in.
Yeah, they'll probably be reduced, bring that over a little bit so it will fit in.
But you're not going to lose that parking space?
No, you should not have to.
I can't tell from this, is that, is that partially a sidewalk on top of that curb?
Yes, there is a sidewalk in front.
But along that extension, that curb that separates the parking?
Oh, that's, that's grass.
That's just grass?
Just grass.
Okay, so you're not losing a?
No.
A sidewalk as well?
No, no, that's just grass.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to confirm with Mr. Box. Obviously, we have an insert here from the fire department, and there's, I believe, a resubmital. I just want to make sure this approval, this is the current approval for the current set of drawings we have in front of us?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'll add too, that, you know, some of the questions about storage and rated firewalls, those are things that the building department look at when they get to that, that stage of development. Some of the architectural plans, the, the building department will look at that, as well as fire, and then they also go out and do their final inspections. So they'll make sure that that's all up to code at that time. They're not, I would say that some of that is not necessarily a, a planning commission item.
Okay.
It was only, yeah, a concern of mine.
Sure.
If it would affect that drive and the neighbors as well.
All right, good. Anyone else? All right. Well, at this time, I guess I need a motion to open it to the public at 6:55.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tuckfield?
And I'll support.
Made the motion? Mr. Meyerly? Supported it? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ma'am, do you have anything you'd like to share? Are you sure? Okay. Then we're going to go ahead and close the public portion with a motion.
So moved.
By Mr. Oliver?
Support.
Seconded by Mr. Meyerly at 6:56. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, do we have a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan for Allied Photochemical, permanent parcel 0818400025 pursuant to the recommendations of the appropriate department heads, and that it meets all available ordinances.
Okay, motion by Mr. Tuckfield to approve. We have second? It's part? Seconded by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
I will. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Spata, Mr. Spatafora is not here. Mr. Meyerly?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley? Yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Good luck, gentlemen. All right, item C, review of the 2021 annual report. Mr. Box?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Hopefully, you all had time to look through this. I know there's some new members that weren't really here for a lot of, of these items, but this is largely what was approved and discussed in the past year. I know from discussions with Mr. Bentley before the meeting, he did point out that the bylaws indicate that this annual report needs to show attendance for the past year, which I did not include, so I do need to make that revision. But otherwise, just open to any comments or thoughts you guys have, if there's anything else you'd like to see in this annual report.
Any comments? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Josh, I really appreciate you putting it together, first off. I don't, I assume you put it together, your department, you, whoever ended up putting it together. I think it's all good information. I was going to recommend that we perhaps do some type of executive summary at the front end. I don't know if it would be a matrix of the different types of approvals and just account or, or something, but, but something to, to encapsulate the rest of it. I assume that, you know, if this goes into a board packet, I would hope that all the board members would read it, and, and maybe they would, but maybe we can give them at least just the, the top line as well of kind of the summary on there.
Sure.
And I'm, I'm not sure that I know exactly what that looks like. I know I can work with you if you want, but that was just my general thought on it.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Bentley?
I would concur with that. That makes it very easy to, to review. The only other thing that I had, I talked to Mr. Box earlier about, is just a clarification on, on, under ordinance amendments, page 2, section 10, 2609B, and it was just to clean up the first statement. Maybe it's just me, mind frog, or mind fog, could be my COVID mind or something, but I, I didn't understand it. I understood what we were doing at the, you know, the second half of that, but I, I just couldn't understand the first part. So if, if everybody else can, I, I'll withdraw my comment, but I just think that that could be clarified, I guess.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, so are you referring to the one where it says to eliminate the phrase on a residentially zoned parcel, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, that first part, I read it in the first half, I guess, of that statement. I couldn't understand.
I'm assuming that's, that's putting in the language that we put in, maybe put quotation marks around the?
Yeah, that's some of the language. But I agree, it, it reads a little difficult, so we can clean that up. And we have, as I said, we have to add attendance, so we have to make some revisions anyways, so we can clean that up.
I would concur. I mean, this is the first one, apparently, that's ever been done, and, and looks good to me.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Box, do we need to make a motion on this?
I don't necessarily think you have to make a motion. Might not hurt.
Receive and file?
Yeah, that you can receive.
Receive and file.
Accept. I'll make a motion that we receive and file the report.
Modify and do we get a second look at it or no?
I think, I think you need a second look at it. You need a second look?
Yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe the motion would be to bring, well, maybe, you don't even need a motion, just ask them to bring it back and.
Bring it back as old business next time with the, the changes you've brought forward.
And I did have one question, I don't know if this would require a motion. Do we know how this goes to the board? So does this go to the board as supplement to a packet? Does Mr. Box present it? Does Mr. Hardy present it? Do we know how this is expected to go? I'm assuming it goes to the board.
Well, based on the bylaws, which we'll talk about next, it says a representative from the commission can present it to the board, so I guess that, that could be one of you, that could be Mr. Oliver, who is also on the board. It could be me, I'll be at those meetings too, so I can present it. I'm not sure if it needs to be an agenda item or just supplement to their packet. I guess I would, I would leave that up to you guys, how you want that handled.
But it's still a ways away, because we're making corrections.
That's correct.
And not some, and I guess to my question, not something we necessarily need to make a motion on. We already have some language about what we may do in the bylaws, and we can certainly decide how we want to handle that later.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Mr. Tuckfield. So we're just going to let it stand as it is, Mr. Orlando, or we don't need a motion?
Correct.
Okay.
We're, we're just going to have Mr. Box make his revisions and then bring it back as an agenda item?
Yeah.
For the next meeting or whenever it's ready.
Okay, so revisions and attendance, we're good.
I got one question. Rich, what you're talking about there, and I come, coming in after the fact, we are amending, you're recommending amending the ordinance for the language?
No, I think he's just suggesting that we change the way it's worded in the annual report.
Right, that's correct.
And we did, we did amend it, and that's referring to the amendment.
Yep.
Okay, got you, okay.
Okay, all right, then let's move on to the annual review of planning commission's bylaws. Mr. Box?
Well, you all have them in your packet, and we reviewed these last year. We do have some new members, so hopefully they especially had a chance to review these. I don't have anything specific to comment on. I think we made a lot of revisions last year. I know we brought it back a couple times to make revisions, so if you feel there are other revisions from last year's changes that we need to make, I'll be happy to do so. Otherwise, we can continue forward with the bylaws that we have.
Anybody?
Mr. Chair, this helped me out immensely.
Mr. Chair, this helped me out immensely. Uh, I actually made a copy of it and have it in my binder, and I look at it, so this is very helpful for me, so thank you.
Good. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one request, uh, and, um, I think I've talked to Mr. Loy about this. Obviously, Mr. Orlando is here tonight, but I think this would go to, um, Article six, section H, I think, that's the correct place, public record, and I think this goes, Mr. Box, to the, to the note that you've been putting in our emails, um, or packets with regards to FOIA information.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm hoping that maybe we can clarify this. I know I've, I've, I've discussed this a little bit, and Mr. Orlando, I'm not sure if you've, if you are up to speed on this, but typically right now, we're getting a, a note within our board packets that, that states that, uh, all, all information is covered under FOIA, not to give it out, and that our bylaws state this. Um, I guess I have a couple of different thoughts here. Uh, my first thought, just from a structure end, is I, I don't know that I like the concept of the way it's set up, and I can talk more about that, but I don't know that I would go much further than that. However, regardless of the concept, I don't read this, this set of bylaws as restricting us from giving out the public documents. So if that's truly what we want, and I think that might be something from outside the planning department, I think that it should reflect it better. I tend to believe that, um, we shouldn't restrict people. I think that it should be a general policy that documents are not given out. I know over the years that I've been here, it's, there's usually not many good reasons, uh, to give out documents, although there have been times where it has made sense. I know there's been times in the past where, you know, members of the, of the board wanted to see some of my packet, for example. Well, technically, under the strict interpretation, I would have to tell them to go FOIA it. Now, maybe that's an extreme case, but there's other cases where I think good judgment would say that you could show the document. So I would generally say, I don't think that we should restrict the commission to only allowing people to see things through FOIA with the understanding that you can do a lot of harm, just like if we all go out and talk to everybody about our packets without showing any documents, we can do a lot of harm. So again, two separate things. I don't think that I like the policy, if that's the policy we're doing, but if it's the policy that we're doing, I think we should make sure that it's clarified in here, uh, cause to my reading, this does not restrict us to FOIA. It just says they are open to public inspection under Freedom of Information Act, and not that they are only open to inspection under Freedom of Information Act. So two things, I don't know how we want to approach it. When I've talked to Mr. Box, this might be a, a wider township, uh, policy, which maybe that is, and I'm not sure how much effect we have over it, but those are the two things there that I'd like to make sure we address. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. So is this a township policy then, is that?
It's, it's not an adopted policy. I think the, we're, the, the language in, in the packet emails that he's referring to, I, I think where that came from was we, we were having issues with folks getting copies of things and not understanding what it meant, and, and jumping to some conclusions that weren't true, and, and it's all over social media, and then hundreds of people show up about something that's not even the case. Uh, and, and in order to kind of slow that process down, um, we were suggesting you can come in and we'll show it to you at the counter. That way we can explain exactly what it means, or you can go through the FOIA process. Um, so I, I would say it's not that I'm aware of an officially adopted policy. It was just some guidance that was suggested to us, uh, for how to handle it.
Okay. Mr. O- Mr. Orlando, what do you, what's your thought legally on this?
I, I don't think I'm prepared to offer a legal opinion on this without, uh, A, discussing it with my partner, and, and B, making sure we have a full understanding of what the, what the commission is, is looking for, and if it's simply a clarification of this, this section of the bylaws, then we're happy to assist in any way that we can.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bentley?
Just a question, Mr. Box. Some of the reasons behind it is because these plans, these prints, th- these are all fluid until they actually get up here, and then it could still be fluid.
Correct.
Because they could come up here with something they submitted to you, you put on agenda, and then it comes to this board, and the board turns it down.
Correct.
And, and so I think some of the idea behind that is to, you know, hold that back until at least it's officially gone through this board and through the BOT. I, I think that was some of the idea too behind that, because again, we've experienced, we're halfway through a project, it's, it ends up on social media with misinformation, and then people feed into that. You guys end up with forty people at the counter because they feel it's gonna impact their way of life. We end up with a full meeting here and possibly it got turned down anyways, so I think that's, that's my interpretation of why that's being done like that.
Yeah, I, I would say that, that's accurate. Uh, but to be clear, uh, first and foremost, these are your bylaws. If you wanna change it to, you know, I, I have no issue with that. Uh, your comment about, you know, forty people showing up at our counter, I would rather have forty people show up at our counter.
So you could tell them, yeah.
So I can explain it, so they know exactly what's happening.
Yeah.
Rather than forty people show up here who think they know what's happening and actually don't know, and then we're here for hours and hours listening to things that are not even relevant to what's happening in reality.
To the issue, yeah.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject here, I, I, I don't think, well, a couple of things. One, I tend to watch a lot of social media, and maybe I miss something, but typically, when I see things getting blown out of proportion, which as we all know, they can and do regularly, um, it's never required a drawing to be blown out of proportion, and to be honest, I have not seen a drawing from the planning commission ever put on social media. Now, maybe I missed it, it's possible. Usually what happens is there's an agenda that's placed online, and everybody go crazy about the agenda, and everybody works themselves up into a panic about it. Now, this certainly makes sense to what you're saying. I'm not sure that it addresses the issue, although it might be a, a good precaution, and one of the things that I would, would offer, maybe, maybe a good rule of thumb is that if someone, if someone thinks that they need to share it, that they ask Mr. Box, say, hey, I'd like to give this out, is this okay? Do we think this is, and, and make it a guideline that leaves it up to the judgment of people, but also builds in something so that as we have new people coming in, because here, what, what I don't want to do when I'm, when we get this email in, you know, when we state a rule, it takes out, uh, it takes out the ability to have judgment on something. So I could say it's ridiculous, but again, I could, my sister's in the audience tonight. By that email, if I, if I took it to the extent, I could say I shouldn't show her the paperwork on the way over here. Now, I don't think that's what you mean, uh, I don't think that's what anybody means, but if we leave it more of a judgment call that has the proper guidelines, the purpose is to not give out the drawing so that it causes a problem, to not spoil records before they happen, and to generally be a gatekeeper so that people aren't coming in and passing drawings out. So I, i- if I was to just make a suggestion, if we were to put something in the bylaws, if we say something to the effect of if drawings are to be given out, contact, if, if, if we think that there's a problem, contact the planning director to confirm that they're stable to be given out, because to me, saying that we can't give them out, period, it, I, I mean, I take it seriously. You've sent that email, and I've had a problem. I, Mr. Box, you've gotten multiple emails from me. I've not shown a drawing to anyone since then. I haven't. I've taken it seriously, and I, I don't want to disregard it, but I do think that there is some leeway that should be built in, reasonable leeway, recognizing what the concern is, so that, so that I can, you know, not say, oh, I know that they're saying don't show it to anybody, but I am gonna show somebody, because I know it's not a problem. I would rather operate within the rules, and I think there can be some reasonable, some reasonable bounds put on it so that we're not triggering, triggering the, uh, the firestorm that we know can happen if the wrong thing is given out. So. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? Do we need to make a motion or anything like that? What would you do, what would you, how would you change that, you know, to?
Well, I think you, I, I don't think that, that a motion needs to be made. If you want to make revisions.
Alright.
Uh, you've had it in your packet, you know, if you want to take it back and, and we can talk about it at the next meeting. If, if Mr. Tuckfield or somebody else feels strongly about anything in here, these are your bylaws, not mine. Uh, if you want to take a, a shot at how it should be worded, I'm fine with that. If, if you want to give me the premise of what you want it to be, I can, I can try to word it as such. Uh, I'm fine with any of those options.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Box, if I'm not mistaken, these were actually approved though last year, is that correct?
Correct.
But they were never signed?
They were signed this evening.
They were signed this evening, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, so now it's just a question of whether you want to make any changes going forward?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, then I, if, if there was no further, I would make a motion to, to have Mr. Orlando, Mr. Box look into this and see whether or not we need to change the current bylaws to match an existing policy, and to possibly bring back a suggestion of, of something that might be an alternative, um, to not allowing them to be sent out altogether.
Okay. Okay. Motion paid by Mr. Tuckfield.
We're gonna look at that specific item, or?
That's the only item we're talking about right now.
I think that the bylaws stand as they are, as long as, so this would not be looking to amend, if I can, uh, have discussion on the motion, Mr. Chairman. It's not looking to amend the bylaws, it's looking to have, uh, Mr. Orlando, Mr. Loy, and Mr. Box give us some suggestions if we want to change them. If we decided not to, the bylaws are still valid. We're not, we're not, we're not suspending them, we're not, uh, my motion wouldn't add anything new, would be requested to bring back some suggestions there.
Alright, okay.
And, and this is only an action upon this statement, because there's some other things that I wanted to bring up.
Then I would, I would suspend my motion if there's more discussion.
Okay, there is. Obviously, there is. Mr. Bentley?
I'm sorry, Mr. Bentley, can I just interrupt real quick? And I'm new to the board, obviously. My question to the board, have you had this problem before where people have come to you and asked you for copies of what we are presented, and, and we've given them to them and it created a problem? I'm just curious.
Doesn't happen often.
But every once in a while it does?
Yeah, it's an every once in a while kind of thing.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, what you're saying is that we have been asked to give them, alright, and, and I'm, just want to make sure we have the point. Are you saying that occasionally we give them and we have problems with them that you're aware of, or that, or that people ask?
I think we've been asked, and I don't think we have given anything other than go to the planning department at Township Hall and speak with Mr. Box. Or Mr. Skurdell.
And Ms. Smith, I think on the, in the nine, eight years, whatever I've been in the planning commission, that I can remember, there may be other incidental times, I think I've shown people drawings three times. I remember specifically three times.
And it's members of the public that will come to you and say?
Yes, generally they, I've never, I don't think I've ever just given one to somebody who came off the street. Uh, I generally would direct them to the planning department. It's usually somebody that I know that I have some familiarity with what they're gonna do, and I say, here's the drawing, and we talk about it. And, and specifically people that are not directly affected, like it's not the petitioner, it's not a representative of the petitioner, it's somebody who might be interested in the idea.
That was my concern.
Okay.
That was my big concern, okay.
So basically, you're showing them, they'll, just to kind of explain to them what's going on.
Correct.
It's not the clerk, it's the FOI- the FOIA director anyway, it all has to go through the clerk anyway, if they FOIA them.
Correct.
I believe Mr. Box can, under, under what we're operating, we'll say is quasi-policy, Mr. Box will show them the drawing at the counter if they come in.
Yes, a- and again, to, uh, there's a lot of points that have been made. I, I would rather they come to the counter so we can explain to them. Uh, for example, the, the site plan we just looked at, uh, I think they had to resubmit three or four times. So by the time you guys see it in the packet, you have some understanding of it. We've actually been working on this for a couple months leading up to it. I would like to be the one, if possible, to answer those questions that they may have, because we're far more familiar with it at that point than you guys would be. Not to say you're not familiar with it, but we've been working with it for months, so if there are questions, if at all possible, I would rather they come to us and we can answer them, and that happens often at the counter. Um, on, on rare occasion, do people come to the counter and ask specifically for something, and we tell them they have to go to the clerk's office at FOIA? We would typically give it out unless it's something we absolutely feel shouldn't be given out. Um, more often than not, we can just show it on the screen and explain why you got this letter in the mail about a rezoning or whatever the case may be, and, and they're usually comfortable with that.
If I could weigh in, I deal with this once in a while, dealing with malfeasance and misfeasance of office, and, uh, what I found out for most of the time is if a commissioner speaks to someone on their own, outside of the office or something, sometimes that gets translated into that commissioner speaking for the whole commission, as opposed to speaking his own personal opinion or something like that. And I, I think in my thirty-six years in business, I've only seen one time in another community where I saw a commissioner try to seriously torpedo a project by going out and running his own campaign against it. Most of the time, it's been more of a, a misfe- inadvertently, uh, you know, giving out information, but the person listening is only hearing what they want to hear type thing. But they think the whole commission's being spoken for when it's only one person. It's only caution you, you have when you do that.
Mr. Chairman, wouldn't that point then to more of a guidance on not speaking than not showing drawings? I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to pry too much here, it's just that it seems like if, if we're trying to solve the problem, I, I haven't, maybe Mr. Box has seen a specific example of it, I think there's been some indication. I've never seen, I have seen cases where people have said things outside of the commission and it's caused a problem. I've seen it. I've never seen a problem with a drawing. Not saying it's not happening, not saying that Mr. Box is not correct, but if the wish is to solve that problem, it would seem like there, this doesn't address it, and it potentially causes other problems.
Well, do, do we solve the problem of fluidity, first of all, because that's the one thing that concerns me the most. As you said, this, this, um, uh, site plan that we, it, it's changed over the months. Instead of us giving anything, it's, it's the, the suggestion, or it's the policy, whatever, to say, stop by the planning department, they're at Township Hall, and they will do a great job of making sure you have a full understanding of the history and where it's going. I mean, wouldn't we be accomplishing the same thing? I don't know. I mean, is it a matter of just being inconvenient? I mean, you know, my neighbor lives next door to me, you know, and if he asks, you know, it's like, you, you need to go to the Township Hall and speak with Mr. Skurdell, and he'll explain it to you, and he'll, he'll do it in, in depth, and you'll have a really good understanding. Or do I just say, here it is, here's my best understanding? And he goes from there? I don't know.
Gen- generally, just to follow up on that.
Sure.
When a resident comes to me, because it usually starts when a notices gets sent out. That's generally the trigger for anyone that knows me personally that would call me. And, and generally, I try to give as much information, but I'm continuously telling him that this is a moving project and everything changes. Now, if it's just a rezoning, i- it, it's kind of a clear case, if they could meet this, this, and this, they'll probably be a- allowed, but they still have to meet things. But when it comes to plans and stuff, I try to do this, that, to send them up there and.
And, and different projects, you know, when we had Meyer come through earlier this year, I got a lot of calls about it.
Yeah.
I forwarded every single one of them to you guys, because I knew that, that was not a smart thing to comment on. Now, I think even early on, I think I said somewhere, someone asked, hey, what are they building there? And I think I said like, a smaller than normal Meyer, and honestly, that was probably even too much to say. I think we heard that reference back multiple times. Um, but I, I think it does change, like you're saying. If someone comes and says, hey, something, I got this notice and they're, they're requesting a rezoning, there is a line of where you say things and where, where you don't, um, and it's, I mean, it, it is a judgment call, and to your point, it can, you can walk the wrong side of the line, definitely can.
I, I don't think it's a matter of saying, it's a matter of sharing, as far as the documents that we receive.
But have we ever seen a case where sharing caused, I mean, I've seen when speaking caused a problem, and, and goodness knows, I've probably participated it to myself to some extent. Um, but I don't think I've ever seen an issue with the drawings. Not saying there could be, I'm just saying, I think we're, we're, we're solving a problem, I, and I hear Mr. what Mr. Box is saying, better to have the planning department do it, but I, I feel like we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't need to be solved and takes away the leeway that, that we already have to, to be able to point people back. And I think people, Mr. Mr. Oliver will say this, I think everybody here will point back to the planning department ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of the time. I know, I know I do, as much as I'm, I'm arguing this tonight. I, like I told Ms. Smith, I think I've showed people a drawing three times, and I pointed a lot of people back to the planning department. And by the way, those three times, I think two of them, I specifically asked, that's why I mentioned this, I asked Mr. Maher at the time, I called him up, I said, hey, someone wants a drawing, I just want me to give it to them, are, are you okay with this? And both times, in his case, I'm not. And by the way, those three times, I think two of them, I specifically asked, that's why I mentioned this. I asked Mr. Maher at the time. I called him up, I said, hey, someone wants a drawing, I just want me to give it to them. Are you okay with this? And both times, in his case, and I'm not saying it should bind you, he said, yeah, just give it to him, it's not a problem.
Okay.
That's exactly how I would handle it. Being in the court system, we get the phone calls all the time. I just left the court, the judge said X, Y, and Z. I'm not in the courtroom, I didn't hear what the judge said. So I'd be very careful with that. I think any call that I personally would get, I would direct to the experts to give them the information they get, because I don't want anything turned around, and I would feel absolutely more comfortable if they took that call. That's just me.
Okay.
So where do we go with this, Mr. Box? I know Mr. Bentley has some other comments too.
Yeah, right.
Should we just move on?
Yeah, I, I would say we can go back and discuss it with the legal staff here at the township. See what their thoughts are. Ultimately, as I said before, these are your bylaws, not mine. I will do whatever you guys want, you know. If you want to change this to say something specific, I have no concerns with that.
Okay. Mr. Hardy, if I could, just add one more thing. And I would say to Mr., Mr. Orlando, Mr. Loyah, who's not here, and Mr. Box, I'm, I'm pushing this hard, but the reason that, I already made a motion, pulled it back, the motion was to have you guys talk about it. If you guys come back after thinking about it and don't want to go that way, I, I hear what you're saying, that's our decision. I'll go with what you're saying. I don't want it to be unnecessarily difficult, and I think it is a good working relationship, and I trust you guys. Just, I, I want to make sure we're doing it right here.
Thank you, thanks.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Tuckfield.
All right, Mr. Bentley, you said you had some other things you'd like to share?
Just a, a couple of, I'm not sure if they need to be corrected, or if we have to change the way we do things. In, in the bylaws, under Article Six, Meetings, Number, or I, what are I, Minutes? And, and I apologize, I didn't see this the last, last time we went through this a year ago, but it says the corrected minutes shall show both the original entry and the correction per MCL fifteen point two six nine one. I don't know that we do that, I don't know that it's necessary. There might be a reason for that, and, and if there is a reason, I don't want to eliminate that, but whenever we correct the minutes, if it reaches, if it reaches the meeting where it's been uncorrected, then, then we probably should have strikeout and, and modification. So again, if, legally, if we should be showing the modification, then we should probably keep this.
Yeah, I mean, according to the statute, you're supposed to show both the correct, original and the corrected version. But then ultimately, what becomes the adopted version would be a, a clean version that, that everyone would approve at the following meeting.
Okay. Because normally, we'll get it before the meeting, we'll review it if we have any comments. Generally, it's all corrected by the time we have the meeting. So in that interim period, do we need to do the strikeout and the correction?
I, I think in order to comply with the statute, yeah. That, that you would need to have those corrections made as part of your meeting. You know, early on, you know, we're reviewing the minutes from the prior meeting, and if there's corrections to be made to those, they should be done in the course of this meeting.
Okay, so we were trying to eliminate that, I guess, step. Review it before we have our next meeting, to make sure everything was correctly done. And then we'd make those modifications, and then it would be re-submitted so that we could review them at the meeting, and they're, they were generally corrected. And, and what I'm hearing, and, and I don't know that it's been published to anybody else but us. I don't know if it goes to the public or not.
Our, our minutes are posted, our minutes are posted, once they're adopted. They are posted on the township website. And I think what, what Mr. Orlando is, is saying is if the meeting minutes make it to this meeting, and there's changes here, if, you know, Mr. Bentley made a motion and the meeting minute said that Mr. Hardy made the motion, that strike-through would be in the adopted version. Any, when you get your packet on Thursday or Friday before a meeting, and you, you notice things and we change them, I don't think that's, I can look at this MCL language and see exactly, but I think that stuff is not the, the strike-through stuff that this is referring to.
Okay.
Yeah, I think part of the issue is the proposed minutes are supposed to be made available within eight days. So if those are made available to the public, and then there's changes that are going to be made to them, it should be done during the course of a meeting. You take your proposed minutes, then you have, you make your corrections, and then the, the adopted version is what becomes the official version for the, for the record.
Yes, I, our policy internally is forty-eight hours, so forty-eight hours from today, we will have a draft version of these minutes available if someone comes to our counter and asks to see them. Now, in the two years that I've been with the township, that's happened zero times. But if somebody did, then yes, that's the version that would end up in the packet, because that has already been shared with the public at that point.
Are those posted, Josh?
The, the draft version we have at the counter for any, they're not posted on the website. They don't get posted on the website until they're adopted at these meetings, so the, the meeting minutes that were adopted this evening from the last meeting will now get posted on the website.
Okay. So it says the commission shall make the proposed minutes available for public inspection within eight business days, not just forty-eight hours, right?
Right, and we have them available for inspection at the counter.
Okay, so at that point, if we haven't seen them yet, to make our comments, then we would have to use strikeout and change?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I, I guess what I'm hearing from this is the, the statement stays, and we just have to do a better, better record-keeping, I guess, of, of what we're doing. Okay. Okay, I have some other.
Well, while you're looking, I have a question. If we're going to make any changes or corrections in the minutes, does it have to be here during this time? Because I know a lot of us will send, you know, hey, Josh, this, you know, I made the motion, or such and such, and you'll make the changes.
And in those instances, I make the changes and send it back out. Up until the point that they're actually viewable by the public is, is when the strike-through starts. So even though they're available to the public, if no one has actually come in to see them, we typically see that as they're not, they're not viewed by the public yet, so any changes, we're not, we're not doing the strike-through at that point. But when we come here and you say, this needs to be changed, that's what should be documented in the adopted version, that something was changed at this meeting.
Okay.
Which does happen, we occasionally have things like that, so.
Okay. If it's just a clerical thing, though, is that necessary to bring it here and share it with the community? Or is it something that you can do?
As, as far as?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really having a hard time wrapping my head around this. So if we have four or five mistakes in a, in a set of minutes, and usually we email you and you make the changes, so when we come here, it's clean, it's an adopted version. But what you're saying, I think, is that those four or five errors should be corrected here?
No, they can be corrected in advance of the meeting.
Okay.
Anything that is corrected at the meeting, if you chose to wait and make those four corrections here, they would be strike-through. If you want to make them beforehand, and I'll recirculate the draft version, that would not be the strike-through.
Even if it's after the eight days?
As long as nobody from the public has come to, to view them. I mean, I guess I can defer to Mr. Orlando. If the public hasn't viewed them, I don't see why that would be a, a change to a public document that needs to be documented.
So that would be under your control, your group's control?
Right.
As to whether or not anybody has seen it or not? Okay.
So we could continue what we've been doing. With the only addition is if somebody on the commission says, wait a minute, you know, I saw this. Then that's a strikeout.
We need to document that, moving forward.
Thank you for clarifying that, that helps a lot.
Mr. Bentley, go ahead.
Article Six, under, under F, Public Hearings, and this is just a question as to how you want to handle this, or, or really what this means. Number Six, it says, Chair asks, this is, after a public hearing, and after all members of the public have had an opportunity to speak, as, as in B, questions, comments from the public to the Planning Commission, representative to address each comment. So after you've addressed the comments that were made during the public hearing, if we did in fact have people that made comments, then the chair asks for discussion. Is that discussion from the, the commissioners? It says Chair asks for discussion. If there are no discussion, or once the discussion is concluded, the chair asks for motion from the commission to close the public hearing. So it's almost like we, we possibly have a, a chance to comment on what has been stated, what's been responded to before we close that, that public hearing. Am I standing that correct? Okay. Is that the way we want to do it? Or do we want to just cut it off after you've explained?
Again, these are your bylaws, so you tell me how you want to do it.
Any comments? From anyone?
There might be times where, I guess, I'd like to, especially when we get a lot of discussion on certain items, there might be, because since we can't respond to them right away, and you guys do respond to them, and I think there's times where maybe there was an item that particularly stuck with me, or one of the other commissioners that we might want to identify or get another clarification on. Maybe it was missed, or maybe, you know, we want to expand on it. So I think that might be nice to have before the public hearing is closed.
I would agree.
Before the public hearing is closed?
Is closed, that's what it says, because number seven, that was six. Number seven says, after that's all done, the chair closes the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, practically speaking, I think that's sort of what we do. Maybe it's not the same order, maybe, maybe we close the public hearing, and then we go back for comments and we have discussion. I mean, I, I guess I'm not, I don't...
And we still discuss it.
Right, I'm not picky about the order. If that's the way it says, I don't mind, but I feel like we, we do sort of do that. Maybe I'm mistaking what you're, you're asking for, Mr. Bentley, or you're asking for?
Just, just the order, and whether or not there is, since it's, one is the discussion is within the public hearing. The next is it's outside of the public hearing, it's done. Public hearing is done. We don't discuss that anymore.
I mean, I would think that you still might discuss things in the public hearing, even after the public hearing is closed, if it's germane to the, to the point.
Correct.
I don't know, I mean, just, just on my end, I don't know that I have a problem having a spot where Mr. Hardy might ask before he closes the public hearing, is there any board discussion? But I'm, I mean, I don't know.
Is there anything legal?
That's what your bylaws provide for, is you ask the members of the public to address, address whatever they want to, and then Mr. Box is given an opportunity to respond. Questions have, have probably come up during that process, depending on how complicated the issue is. And at that point, you have the opportunity to discuss amongst yourselves any issues that have been raised at that point, prior to closing the public hearing.
Now, is there any legal ramification if those discussions take place after the closing of the public hearing? Or should they happen before the closing of the pub, public hearing? In other words, can we talk about it, you know, for an hour after the public hearing's closed?
Well, you, you still have your agenda items that you're supposed to be following on, so you know, at, at some point, you have to stop discussing, you got to make a motion, or you're, you got to move on, you got to table that issue, something's got to happen with it, so if, if the public hearing portion has been closed, and everybody's had an opportunity to, to discuss what they wanted to discuss, it would be improper to say, oh, by the way, I have something more that I want to talk about on that issue. You can't, you can't reopen the, the discussion on that, on that topic.
It should be more of an action item, like I propose this, or whatever. Or I make a motion to.
Correct.
Typically, we bring, we bring the public for anything they need to raise questions. So it's happened to me many times where, where a resident has brung something up that, that looked a little bit different to me. So generally, when the planning director responds, we could interact with the director at that time.
That's what, that's what this is saying, that we can do that.
Yeah.
But it, it's done before the closing of the public hearing. According, according to our bylaws.
Because the chair will close the public hearing, and then the chair will ask the planning director to respond to some of the comments. And then, then the planning director follows through with, with answering some of the questions. And then during that time, I've asked, I followed up on that, again, even after the chair closed the public, and I didn't ever see a problem with that.
If I could add into, I, I think you're right, Mr. Oliver, that's how we've been doing it, but I think what Mr. Bentley is pointing out is according to our bylaws, we've actually not been following the procedure. The, the bylaws are saying that we need to have that discussion, I'll respond to any comments they had or questions they had. We have that dialogue, then you close the public hearing. To Mr. Tuckfield's point, for the most part, I don't think it matters, order, as long as all of those things are being accomplished. However, I will point out that there are times when people are in the audience, they may not get up and talk, because other people have already asked the questions that they wanted to ask. But if we then have this discussion before the public hearing is closed, it might bring something else up, and at that point, the public hearing is still open, so they could then get up and ask a question. So I, I do see that there is a benefit to following it the way it's written, as opposed to how we've actually been doing it.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, one thing, when Mr. Loyah came on, one of the comments that he had after watching a few ZBA meetings was to be careful, and I'm sure Mr. Orlando can speak to this, to be careful about excessive discussion after the public hearing before a motion. Which I think we do do that, maybe we do too much or not, but that might be one other reason to maybe parentheses it into the public hearing to try to limit that. Just more area to, to go back on something you already said in the other fact-finding portions of the hearing.
Are we limiting it, or are we just moving it to another part of the meeting? I have a, an, an issue. If everybody's had a chance to speak, somewhere along the line, we have to move it along, so to speak.
Correct.
And, you know, if we do this within the public portion, one comment from a commissioner, or one question from a commissioner could generate a dozen people, all standing against that wall, wanting to speak. And, you know, without, you know, the petitioner, or without Mr. Box having an opportunity to address the item, and he does. Mr. Box and Mr. Skirdel do a really nice job of being succinct. I mean, they're very clear and they're very crisp with their answers, so I, I don't know. And I, I see your point, because it's in our bylaws, but maybe that's something that needs to be changed. I think we need to close the public hearing, go to Mr. Box, and if there's any quick comments from us, let's do that, and then let's make a motion. That's my opinion, so. I'm ready to hear from anyone.
And that's to eliminate people getting back up and talking.
Never had that problem before.
No. Did, did yours or mine?
Never, never.
So.
Yeah, well.
So what, what are our thoughts?
So it seems like the way we're doing it's working, but it's our bylaws, it's just not, not, we're not following the bylaws quite exactly the way they're specifically written.
Yeah.
Do you guys do this in the board, public hearings?
No, there's two times. And so every agenda item just keeps going. But they get, they get a time, uh, in the beginning of the meeting, and a time at the end.
And they close the public hearing. When they close the public hearing, we were able to ask questions. And that way, that's not opening up a can. Like, my question might trigger something in the audience to come back up, and it's never ending.
Okay.
That's my, my opinion.
If I could help out, I think maybe if you look at it in terms of fact-finding, once the public gets up there, the public states their questions or their facts, we do our best to respond to them. But that point, you've heard it, so it's really, in public hearing, you're kind of listening to what the audience has to say to you. After the fact, you've got all the technical reviews as part of your fact-finding mission. You got the attorney weighing in with his facts, and you got the public weighing in and their comments, so having discussion ongoing, I kind of agree that you never, sometimes you may never see an end to it. It's just going to keep triggering it over and over again. Most communities I work in, they close the public hearing. They do respond to some of the questions, but then they close the public hearing, then they take it back to the board to discuss everything they heard. Some of the places I work in have rules that they, if there's a public hearing on an item, they don't even take it up that night. They hear everybody, they wait till the next meeting before they even bring the issue back to the commission, or a board, or a council, or something to review, just so they can keep it simply to a fact-finding mission on the night of the public hearing. I don't, I, I belabors things and delays things too much. I wouldn't propose that, but some people do that. So if that helps out with some of your discussion up here, um.
But it sounds like that we could switch six and seven, but break up six and, uh, the, you can, uh, you know, the chair can ask for a motion, um, uh, from the commissioners to close the public hearing. Then he closes the public hearing, and then the chair asks for the discussion, uh, from, from you guys. Well, actually, that's already happened. So that really needs to be above 5B, if that's where you're, if you're wanting to respond to their comments before the close of the public hearing or after it, uh, that'll, that'll, uh, change this arrangement, I guess. Um, I, I'm, my only point is, we don't always do it the same way, and, uh, and I can see, um, positives either way, so, um. I guess everybody else has.
The way you typically do it right now, from reading subsection five correctly, seems like you skip six, which is okay. I don't have an issue with that, in my own personal opinion. It seems like you go to 5B, because that's where you have the planning department respond to all the questions from the public. Then, then you, you jump to seven. You close the public hearing.
I think we close the public hearing before I even respond to their comment.
I think that goes back to the same bungee, the bungee cord effect. If, if Mr. Box responds, you're, you're going to have more people come up, because usually that's what happens. Mr. Box responds, and then we have three people raising their hands, asking if they can talk again.
Yeah, I, I think to Mr. Oliver's point, the way we've been doing it, to me, seems like it's been working. I would suggest that I'll rearrange the order of this in the bylaws to accurately reflect how we're operating currently.
Yes.
I mean, but most of the communities I, I deal with, in terms of, not special land use or zoning, but in terms of straight site plan review, if you look at the state law, you're not, it's not a requirement to have a public hearing on each and every site plan. It is, I, in terms of your local ordinance, it is a requirement. That's why you have the, this in here. And I'm not of opinion either way what's better or worse, but it's like, but as it says, it's a difference that that factors into your discussion.
Could you not take, um, 5B after all members of the public have had an opportunity to speak, and the public portion is closed, the chair will, and then remove number seven?
Yes.
Would that work?
Yes.
Okay.
Some put they got to close the public hearing though.
Yeah.
Are we, are we all agreed? Yes?
Where's it say that at?
Okay. That sounds good to me.
Okay. Is Bentley what else do you have, sir? That was good.
Um, the only other one I have, uh, is under membership, Article four, um, item five. And, um, and this, I talked a little bit to, uh, Mr. Box, um, and, and maybe this is a non-issue, but it says, uh, one member of the township board shall be appointed uh, to the planning commission, uh, as an ex-officio member. Uh, that's our, our trustee. Um, and, uh, there is nothing stated in this about, um, the fact that we would have a, uh, a representative from the, uh, zoning board of appeals. And yet, um, from what Mr. Box says, that's part of their requirement, is to have a representative from their group sit on the planning commission. And either we need to identify that under, um, uh, G, uh, where it is the duties of the zoning board of appeals represented, but that didn't seem like the place to do it. I guess I'm, I'm thinking we should have a statement in there that, um, we, it'll be, because this is talking about the members, the membership of the planning commission, that it should state there that we have a, um, a mem- one member, um, that represents the zoning board of appeals, um, and is appointed by the zoning board of appeals, not the planning commission, um, as that's, that sits on our commission.
If, if I could weigh in on that, so.
Sure.
Right now, the zoning board of appeals requires someone from the planning commission to be on the zoning board of appeals. So they don't necessarily have to be appointed to the zoning board of appeals. Somebody from this commission must sit on that. So by default, somebody up there uh, in your commission is also on the ZBA, and that's evident when you look further in the bylaws and it talks about agenda items. One of the agenda items is the ZBA liaison update, so it, it identifies that one of you must be on the ZBA.
Never says.
It doesn't say it's, it's required here, but because of the fact it's required there, by default, it's kind of required here. Uh.
You're right.
We can, we can absolutely put that in there, so it's a little bit more clear. But I, I think it, it's already a guarantee that you're going to have somebody on the planning commission on the ZBA, because that's a requirement in the ZBA's bylaws.
Yeah, and I was just checking it just to make sure from, from the zoning enabling act, because I think we've talked about it. Which, which one is the predominant body? The planning commission is the predominant body. One of its members shall be on the ZBA, so it's really not an action to the planning commission. Um, I think it might be, I don't know. I think we have that in the ZBA bylaws, but if it is in the place, it probably is better in there than.
The ZBA bylaws do have it in place that it requires a planning commission member.
Even though obviously, the enabling act takes precedence anyway, and it says it, but still, that's where we, we mentioned it.
Um, and my last question, um, if I misspoke, I'm sorry. But, uh, do we have, uh, a, um, definitive, um, decision-making process for ground signs any longer? And if we do, uh, which it seems, uh, that we do under, uh, definitive, uh, um, decisions, uh, in the bylaws, but up above, it says decis- decis- decisions by the commission, uh, and it says, "Commission shall make a definitive decision on all ground signs, site plan, and special land use." But only site plan and special land use are noted, um, above in the uh, section, sorry, uh, Article three D. And I'm wondering if that needs to be added there or, or not.
I think that's a good catch. Um, the, the ground sign should prob- the words ground sign should probably be removed from decisions by the commission. So when you get a site plan, it identifies where sign locations are. You approve that. As far as height, dimensions, all of that stuff from the sign, that is now, the way the, the sign ordinance is being written, it, it, that is now, uh, a function of the building department.
That's what I thought. Okay, so, so we need to strike, uh, the sign portion of uh, N. Let me see. Article, Article six. Did I say N? Yeah, Article six N. Strike ground signs. That's it?
Yep.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bentley. Article six, wherever you went.
Did I say that right?
No, I'm just trying to.
I'm just trying to confuse you.
Uh, no, no.
It's on, uh, page, uh, five.
Ah, gotcha.
That might help.
That helps a lot.
Decisions by commission, letter N.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion on bylaws? Anyone?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd just add that I had started a motion earlier. I think I would leave that as a non-motion, but Mr. Box, if you could, if you could work with Mr. Aloya and see if you can bring back a recommendation, if you have one, or if the recommendation is not to do anything. Like I said before, I'm, I, I trust your guys' judgment on it.
That's on six H?
Yeah, uh, the FOIA, the FOIA section, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, six H.
I think you need a couple more motions, gentlemen, and, and ma'am.
What's it?
Um, well, you've, you've asked Mr. Box to re- rewrite or revise, um, Article six, section F, and then five B, six and seven. So I think you need a motion referring that to him. And then, uh, Mr. Bentley's most recent catch on Article six, section N, to strike the portion referring to the ground signs, uh, I think you need a motion on that as well. Because you're, you're amending the by, the bylaws and rules at this point.
Okay.
Well, I, I guess, my as- my assumption was, they're suggesting at this point that I make those changes. If they like them, they can adopt the, or the, the amendments at the next planning commission meeting. I'm not, do they need to make a motion this evening?
I thi- I think it makes sense for, not, not to amend it, but to refer it for amendment.
Is that multiple motions, or just one, one motion?
Yeah.
So moved.
And, and then, as, as per our previous discussion, it would be a strikeout and revision, uh, so that we could see what's changed, and then boom.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Is, is that okay, that I can just so moved?
You just did it.
Thanks.
Who would like to second?
I'll second.
And Mr. Meyerly will second the motion. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. Is that good, Mr. Orlando?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, moving on. Old business. Mr. Box or Mr. Skurdo?
There is none this evening.
Okay. This is you. Public comments on non-agenda items. Do you have anything you'd like to share with the commission? Okay. He's very.
She's, she's ready to go home for dinner, is what she is.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
Okay. Um, commissioners' comments. Anyone? Okay. Macomb Township Board of Trustee Liaison Update. Mr. Charles Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple things, like always. Uh, probably six weeks ago, the supervisor, uh, asked the board, we voted on, uh, bringing in three departments, and one was DPW, one was the Chief Financial Officer, one was the land divi- the land.
Development.
Uh, the land develop office. And, uh, we've took, we've taken applications, we've, uh, accepted two of the departments, one being the Chief Financial Officer, which is in-house, we got, and, uh, Stacy Smith, she's doing it now, and she's doing a fantastic job, and the other one is our own Jim Van Tiflin. We all know Jim very well. And, uh, he's going to be the land, uh, develop, development officer. And, uh, uh, a little more work for the both of them, and I think the both are going to do a great job. So I want to congratulate them and let the board know that. And, uh, the other thing is that our, um, grant writer is seriously and heavily per- pursuing a grant that would, uh, we could use on our sidewalks.
Oh, cool.
And connect some parks and connect a lot of stuff, and the grant could be up to four hundred and fifty thousand. So that, that was kind of the big news, so.
Sure.
And that's it.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Oliver?
I did. Our, is, uh, for, for Jim, uh, Van Tiflin, is that, um, land development off, is, is that something additional that he would be taking on, or?
Well, wha- what it is, what it means, he's going to oversee planning, building, planning and building.
And engineering.
And engineering. That's his own job, yeah. And, uh, uh, that, that'll be his, that's his new title and his new responsibilities.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's.
Yeah.
Very much helpful.
Well deserved for both of them.
Sure.
Anyone else have a question for Mr. Oliver? Okay.
No questions.
All right, ZBA liaison, Mr. Tuckfield.
Mr. Chairman, just mentioned that we have a meeting on Thursday, so we'll be back here, assuming that, uh, we can get here through the snow. We'll see how, we'll see how Thursday goes. Um, we have election, we possibly have election of officers on Thursday. I think we have a, a quorum of regularly scheduled or regular members. Um, and that's it. Other than I've forgotten my commissioner comments, to thank my sister who, uh, rode with me tonight, told her it'd be a short meeting, and here we are at eight o'clock, and I was part of it, so. Appreciate, uh, appreciate her waiting dinner, and that's all I had.
Sounds like you over dinner.
And if he takes you to McDonald's, he should be in trouble.
He's usually the one that talks all the time.
All right, planning department items.
Uh, nothing to, uh, report this evening. Oh, yeah, if, Dave, if you want to talk about the master plan a little bit?
Yeah, we're going to be bringing, uh, we're feverishly working on revising the, uh, master plan right now. The distribution comments, we didn't receive any comments from any other agencies routes surrounding cities, and that was due by January nineteenth. Um, our plan is to bring a draft copy to the commission for review in a public hearing on March first?
That's correct.
The March first meeting.
Okay.
Great.
And so that night, you don't necessarily have to adopt it, but you're going to hear the public hearings, and then you can go through it, and then if you want some revisions, you, you, always feel free, we'll take it back, and we can make some revisions.
And that master plan, would it be published to the public before that meeting?
Yeah, fifteen days before the meeting, so in and around February fifteenth, sixteenth, it'll be on display at our counter. I'll probably have the building department calendar. We may take it to the rec, probably the rec department, put it on the counter over there.
Possibly the library as well.
And we'll, yeah, and we'll have it on, online too.
Okay.
Can I say if you have it online?
But if you have it on the website. Okay. Nothing else, gentlemen?
No.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. Smith, supported by Mr. Tuckfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes.